Good evening, welcome to the August Lake Mills Board of Education meeting. Our mission statement is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Could we rise and do the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to call the meeting to order. Could we have roll call, please?
Don Delaney?
Here.
Rachel Davies?
Here.
Robert DiPerio?
Here.
Donna Thomas?
Here.
Richard Mason?
Here.
Verification, meeting notice?
It was submitted to the Lake Mills leader. It was posted at the Lake Mills Library Post Office in the Bank of Lake Mills on August 4th, and it was also posted on the district website.
Good. Any agenda revisions? I don't think we have any. Can I have an approval?
I'll move approval of the agenda as printed.
Second?
Moved and second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Anything else? All right. That passes. Community input? Do we have any community input?
I'm not aware of any.
All right. Mr. DiPerio, facilities.
On July 20th, the facilities committee of the board met, and not only ourselves, but we had representatives of Myron Construction and EUA Architects. The focus of the meeting was to look at potential improvements to this building, integrating in the Roffers' report on enrollments, the EUA report on the actual physical condition of the facility, as well as the administration's review of some of the programmatic issues and improvements that would be important. We started thinking about enrollments, but we wanted to integrate that in with some program changes as well. So, we had, that was the focus of the meeting, and we also wanted to think about how those enrollment increases may affect the other buildings in the district, so that whatever is thought about doing or any improvements here would be complementary to those other buildings. Also at the meeting, Ms. Strike updated us, as she is a member of the Lake Mills City Council Multi-Use Building Ad-Hoc Committee, that's a long name, that the city is looking at a number of things, looking at senior center, activity center, kind of things, and we wanted to make sure that, again, whatever efforts we went forward with were complementary with theirs. They are considering a referendum sometime in 2018. As we looked at the high school project, if we were to move forward with any improvements at the high school, the November 2018 election would be the appropriate, the best time to be moving forward with that. We have the full details of that meeting in our proceedings, which was included in your packet and will be acted on later. There's specifics as to what the administration sees the needs at the high school. And moving forward, we have asked the architectural firm to look at this site and think about how, what would be the maximum build-out of this site? What can we put here? We're thinking from the condition report that we had from EUA, that this building still has some life to it, depending upon your opinion, 20 to 30 years. And so we wanted to see just what will fit, what makes sense. That is one of the things that we wanted to look at going forward. And we also wanted to integrate our open enrollment into the Roffers' enrollment study, which he had not included, and wanted to see if that, how much of a difference that made to the conclusions of that report. We'll be meeting again, probably within the next month to six weeks, once the, once those firms have an opportunity to put some things together. We can talk about a variety of alternatives. We'll share those here with the board. And then also, the board will have to make some decisions about how to involve the community as we move forward. So, that's it.
Good. Thank you. The Policy Committee, met on August 10th. And if you recall, Mrs. Strike, we sent her off to work with Niola, revising all the policies and integrating them and making them eventually accessible on the internet and so on, and cross-referencing them and all of those kinds of things. So we had our first look at it, and we reviewed the, and updated the policies through the 2000s. And we will have everything eventually under Board Docs, which are accessible via computer and so on. And we are going through them, we're meeting this week again, and as we bring them to the board, we'll probably bring them in a big bulk group of them together, because we're reviewing all of them again. And there's hundreds of policies probably in there. So, we will bring it to the board as a whole group and give you a chance to look at it or, and pass on the revisions, the major revisions and so on. And then we'll vote on that in the second reading. So, any questions on that?
You do have access to everything that we see by, on your Board Docs, if you just go to Policies, the drop-down menu, it says "Under Construction," and they're all there.
Under consideration.
Oh, under consideration.
All right. Dr. Delaney, correspondence.
We have two. We have a thank-you card from Elaine Massey, thanking the district for the gift certificates, plant, and encouraging words on her retirement. We also received a card from Darlene Myers, thanking the district for the retirement party that was held in her honor.
That she didn't want to attend.
But she did.
All right. Thank you. The administrative reports. Mr. Vogel, you're up.
First of all, I want to hand out our grading practices, effective student feedback handout that our staff has been working on the last several years. Majority of our leadership time, our building leadership time last year was focused on getting this together, really focusing on effective student feedback on a daily basis, consistent building-wide, to help increase student achievement. So, what I like to do is hand these out to you guys and take a look at them. And then, in September, if you have questions, I can answer those and talk about it more if you'd like as well. So I'll hand those out to you now.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kayle.
On top of getting ready for this upcoming school year, which we've already had some tennis meets already, so it's kind of started. So, we did get our advanced placement scores back, and our district has been, of course, on the honor roll the past several years. And with our scores coming back, I think one thing to really make a point of emphasis for is our participation in advanced placement courses has increased over the last two years 41%, which is amazing. I think it's 54, 69, and then this year, this past year, we had 92 tests taken in our in-house and a couple online AP courses. And with that, with the percentage, with the percentage of tests taken, the scores, the passage rates of three or better are slightly above the state average, close to 70% with a three or better on these exams, which, again, is another awesome stat. AP Bio was a new in-house offering last year. We had seven students take the course and take the exam, and all seven passed with a three or better. So, congrats to Todd Patton and our AP Bio students. And that average was a 3.143. AP Language and Comp, another in-house, six tests were taken with a 3.3 average. AP Lit and Composition, another in-house, seven tests, 2.857 average. AP Calc, AB, also in-house, 24 tests, that was, that's an increase of 14 from the previous year, with a 3.33 average, which is outstanding. AP Government, I think that's been recognized in the past here at Lake Mills High School, 27 tests with a 2.963 average. And also, Advanced Placement, US History, another in-house, with 19 tests, with a 3.0 average. So, again, congratulations to those students and those teachers for their work in our advanced placement courses. We also had online AP courses, macroeconomics and stats, one test each. Very well, I just, I won't give you the scores for those. One last thing, we do have a kind of a development that I'd like to talk to you guys about. We would like to have a Lake Mills High School biking team. And Howard relate that. It's not a WA-sanctioned sport. We would kind of recognize it, or my hope is that we would recognize it as very similar to our equestrian team, where the, these students represent Lake Mills High School, and they sign the training rules, but they do not pay an athletic fee, per se, because we're not paying for a coach. I don't know if that makes sense. But these, the biking team has kind of increased in popularity over the last several years. This upcoming year, we have 10 participants, eight males and two females, that race for a cam rock team, which is a team of, from schools around the area. And while they compete, they compete for cam rock, but they also, in the races, they will wear Lake Mills High School gear if we also choose to officially sponsor them. We do, we have to pay a little bit for that, you know, we don't pay for travel or coaching anything, but we do pay certificates and some pins, but, you know, that's, I think that's a good price to pay for those kids representing us at the state and a couple of them at the national level. So I don't know where that goes as far as.
Yeah. I strongly urge us to consider that. The program is huge. It's huge. So it's not just high school. There are many, many middle school and students participating as well. It's amazing to see them all out there gathered before they go on their ride. It's, there are 55 kids, I think, on team, and more than that participated in club before team started. So, it would be great to consider that, not just high school, perhaps middle.
It's very similar to, other districts, bigger districts will sponsor lacrosse or field hockey, which is not a WA-sanctioned sport, but it's still Arrowhead Field Hockey or Arrowhead Lacrosse. You know, we would just have a biking team.
Is it open to anybody? Any child who wants to?
I believe so, yeah.
Yes, yep. It is.
Any other questions?
I have a question about the AP. So if they get a score of three or higher, that translates into college credit?
At most universities, yes.
Oh, okay.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Bauer?
I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna start with a Chromebook update, what I know, and if you have any questions, I think I'm gonna ask, if you have questions, can I ask in the middle of my report? At the end, I'd like to just go over a couple of student things that were kind of fun for us. But as of Friday, we had 300 people register, or students registered for the middle school, so that's about three-fifths of our kids, with 11 opt-outs so far. So, of the Chromebook program that we implemented. In terms of feedback, for me, I've had three parent concerns that they expressed through email, two other ones that were expressed through just general questions, like can I get this, get it from my high school daughter or my elementary son, because it's such a good deal. I don't check Facebook. I don't check the Facebook, on Facebook, so I'm not sure, I'm not saying that there aren't concerns out there, but I am saying that if they are, they haven't elevated it to come to me. And the primary concern on the one end was that the seventh and eighth graders, they're not sure if they're going to use them in high school and to make the final payment there. So, of the three concerns I got, those were two of the three. And then, on, kind of on the other end of the spectrum, you know, people think it's a good deal, not just for themselves, but we even had some families, a family I know of, that couldn't afford a computer at all. And so this payment plan, they were so excited, because it's the first computer that they're gonna have for their family. So, and I would say there's equal, can we, I would say there's three or four people who said, hey, can we, can we have more of this? And like I said, probably five, well, three people with concerns and two people who just had general questions. So in terms of emails, that's, and I had some conversations with people. People who are opting out are simply coming forward and asking for an opt-out form. They're not making any judgment calls or any, I think one of the options that people are going for is, oh, I have three kids in the building, I'm gonna opt in one kid, let the other two return them at the end of the day, and then have the one to take home, and then all three of my kids can work off of that one computer. So, that's kind of been, if people are, you know, figuring out a different way of the system, that's, that's one of the ways that they're really taking advantage of it, which I think is, is fine. That's great, whatever they can work out. So does anybody have any questions on that piece, before I move on to some student stories?
I just had one other piece of feedback I saw on Facebook, that it was just, because this is new, you know, and there were still things to work out, they were just, they just had hoped that they, or they wished that they had had more time to prepare for it. So, that was it.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else?
Okay. So as we move into our community building with the middle school, I do want to go back and just savor a couple of moments. I mean, these things happened all the time, and we are still gonna be offering these opportunities for students, but really, we did focus highly on giving students a chance to really explore who they were, like personally, and teachers would really take them by the hands and let them just go. And so, at the end of this last year, we had two that I wanted to mention. The paper has already mentioned Caitlin Twesme. But I do want to mention that Kathy Rosecki, our seventh grade science teacher, was approached by Caitlin and said, I want to do something, I want to do something else. And so they went online and they looked for all these things. And UW had a, UW Madison had a crystal-growing contest. So Kathy helped Caitlin set up the experiment, and then Caitlin took it home and grew this amazing crystal. And she got, she went to this competition at UW Madison and got best, best quality crystal. There were a couple of different qualifications, but she got best quality crystal. So, in doing so, she was asked to do another crystal experiment, which she has been working on all summer. The parameters of that and different things are for crystal growing on the space station. So, her crystal-growing experiment will be launched in November onto the space station. So, that's just one of the things. And then I do want to mention, because she, she's going to high school this year, and I've already made sure Kayle knows who she is, but back in sixth grade, fifth and sixth grade, we had a student by the name of Maddie Stewart, who was just beginning her exploration as a sharpshooter. And so she's been, all of these years, doing different sharpshooting activities. She's featured on the covers of magazines, she's got gun sponsors, and she's been in calendars and all sorts of different things. But in eighth grade, we have Innovation Project, and she's, she is a girl competing among women. So oftentimes, her rifle is a little bit heavier than she needs it to be to shoot. So as part of her eighth grade Innovation Project for the year, she developed, it's the tiniest piece, but I guess every ounce makes a difference, depending on what she needs to shoot, she can substitute this, this piece of her rifle in and out to make it just a couple ounces lighter for herself, depending on what she's shooting. And the, so she did that, and she had it designed and whatever, and actually made. And then her company that sponsors her said they would develop an actual rifle around that piece that she designed. So she actually has her own, and she has that name, that piece named after, she gets to name it. We wanted to name it after her, but she's way too humble to do that, but, so she's got this, this little piece of a rifle that she's designed. And these are the kids that are, you know, and then, and I feel Pam said I could brag a little bit about our students, because they do so many amazing things all the time, and I know I'm just mentioning a couple tonight. But I wanted to give you some feel-good stories, and I wanted to know that all of our students do great things, and I don't always take the time to mention them, so thank you for giving me that opportunity tonight.
Good. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions for the middle school? All right. Thank you.
Mrs. Thompson?
Good evening. I just have a couple of updates for you. Last week, we had four of our teachers attend Teachers College Reading Institute in New York City, and all of them came back with great stories of the learning that has happened, so they wanted to extend a thank you and share their gratitude for allowing them to go on that trip. They'll be coming back to meet with their grade-level teams, and then during our in-service, they'll also be sharing out the learning that had happened over the course of that week-long institute. I wanted to thank our garden volunteers. We have families that have volunteered their time over the course of the month of August to keep our garden going. They are harvesting the produce and weighing the produce, so we're going to keep track of how much produce we're actually growing. And then they're freezing and preserving the produce this summer to be able to use in our food service program when we come back in the fall. So we'll have some numbers for you in the next couple of months. Our families have been doing online registration, and I've signed up for Ready, Set, Go conferences. This is the second year that we've changed the format. Families get to choose a 15-minute block of time to come in to meet their teachers. It's one-on-one. The child gets to meet the teacher, ask questions that they might be wondering about their new classroom and their new grade level, and take a look around the classroom. So our parents have signed up for those already, and we're looking forward to meeting everybody at the end of the month. And this year, our theme is Let Kindness Shine. So all of the work that we'll be doing at the elementary school is going to be helping our students to discover their own gifts, the kindness that they have within, the gifts of others, so bridging the gap between people who might be different from themselves, learning about other people's backgrounds, and then also providing gifts to others, so service projects at the elementary school and reaching out to our community. So that's the overarching theme for the school year ahead. Any questions?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Brown?
I just have a couple of things for you. The first one is in your Board Docs. It's the annual report outlining our district's use of seclusion and restraint from the previous year. So if you look at that, I just wanted to let you know those numbers. At the elementary school, we had 34 instances of seclusion and 20 for restraint, and at the middle school, we had 26 for seclusion and 27 of restraint. So those are numbers that we need to let you know about. The students that were involved were six different individual students at the elementary level and six different students at the middle school level, and all of those 12 students have IEPs. So, if there's any questions on that, otherwise I can give you a few other highlights that have happened in the last month. With transitioning into this role, I've been able to attend the new director training that happened last week, both through W-CAS and through CISA 2, so I've been able to make some connections that way. And we are looking, as we're moving forward, into transitioning towards a paperless system with our IEPs and well, as well as like the special education binder that has been kind of given out in the past, just some different resources for our staff that will become paperless. Any questions?
All right. Thank you. Mrs. Silverood?
So, a couple of things to let you know about. One of the things that we're changing with our assessment programs at the elementary school is we're changing from NWEA MAP, which is one of our district assessments, to IREDDI. And this is a newer program that's aligned to the common core, and the districts that have really let me know about it and really kind of said, hey, you really want to look at this, said their teachers absolutely love it because of the instructional strategies that come with the assessments for all kids, not just your struggling kids, but for all kids, to keep moving them forward. And so that's one of the changes we're making this year, and that will affect our second through fourth grade. And then from there, we're gonna see how that goes with our second through fourth grade and look at moving that up through the fifth, sixth, maybe one grade at a time, because we want, we want their data to grow with them as they age. So that's something that we're looking at. This month, I got to attend a data meeting with both of our psychologists and with Tara Williams, our ELL coordinator, and some people that are really good experts in our school data, because they're data assessment coordinators in other districts, walked us through exactly what to look for in the ACT, the ACT Aspire, how to compare results, some really nice stuff. So, we have all the results from last year's testing, they're just embargoed, so I can't share them yet. But the good news is, is all the parents will be getting, by the second week in September, their individual student results in the mail from us. The ACT sends them directly, but ACT Aspire, the forward exam, I feel like I'm missing one, DLM, we will mail out to the parents so that they have a copy, and it's usually a colorful copy of the results for their child, so that they can see how they're doing. And then teachers can start looking at the results, it's all loaded into EduClimer, and it's also available through Wise Dash, which is the state portal. So we'll start looking at data to make some educational decisions about that kind of stuff. And this week, we have our middle school math teachers, grades six through eight, are attending the CPM math training in Madison. They could choose from a couple of different trainings, but the most, the majority of them picked this week in Madison. And we are switching our math curriculum to be more of a workshop-based model at the middle school level, six through eight, and more collaborative learning for math, which we're really excited about. And four days of training there, they're gonna be really rearing to go. It's been a good training so far. Any questions?
All right. Thank you. Mrs. Brocker?
Myself and the business office team have been very busy this last month. We had our financial audit, which went over very well. They made some suggestions on improvements in our operation, which we already had done some of them already, so very happy to move forward in the business operations of the district. We also are preparing for the new year with contracts, I mean with updates in pay and everything for all our employees. So, our year is just ending, but we're also in high gear getting ready for this coming year with financial payroll, all of those operations.
All right. Any questions on finance? All right. Mrs. Strike?
Well, I have a rather lengthy report to share with you tonight, but before I get to it, I want to say that we offered the, we hosted the Wisconsin Public Education Network Summit here last Wednesday, and it was just a wonderful, wonderful event. I mean, we were truly just the host, we, they, you know, used our space, but people were so complimentary about the facilities and our staff. The building looked great, technology worked great. It was just, it was a really, a very proud time for, for our district. So I want to thank all the custodians and technology people and administrators and support staff, everyone that helped that, make that such a great day. All right. My purpose this evening is to talk about handbook updates. We do this each year. It's pretty lengthy. Like I said, many of these were brought to us by Bob Butler, our attorney that we work with. Some of these were brought to us by the Horton Group, which is the group that oversees our insurance. And then we also brought in Linda Mott, who is from Key Benefits, who works with us on our other post-employment benefits. And then Steve Laval, who's the gentleman that I've been working with on Niola with, on policy, has offered some. So there's, so there's many. So I'm just gonna quickly go through these. I presented you with a hard copy, because I think you'll be able to look at the handbook online when you get a chance, and then walk through this. I've also provided this information to the leadership of the teachers group, the par educator group, and the custodial group, so they group, and the custodial group, so they can start taking a look at all of this, and then I'll meet with them if they have any questions to make sure they have their input before we have our second reading next month. So first of all, an important distinction, and this has come up actually twice this year, in terms of the person that obtains the reports or concerns about nondiscrimination. In the past, it had always been the district administrator. I've learned through all these sources that that really is not appropriate, we should have another district-level person do, receive those concerns and then do the investigation. And so Jamie Severud as the female and Kale Vogel as the male will be the representatives that will take that. Then if there are any concerns, then I can check out the investigation and be the first source before it comes to you with concerns. Megan has worked really hard on creating our new district organizational chart. It's in front of you. It's, it reflects our very newest changes of splitting out special education from learning and pupil services. It reflects that the special ed director and the principals will share in the evaluation of the special education staff. It incorporates the special ed coordinator that we've added at the elementary school and her role in working with paras, special education paras and regular education paras. So this will now be incorporated into the handbook and, when it's approved, and also into policy when it's approved. So you can take a peek at that, that's at your place as well. We've added some things such as updated the district calendar. A large section has been changed in the Family and Medical Leave Act. Now that we have Becky Hofferman, we're really getting up to speed on the most recent FMLA policies and procedures, and this new language was proposed by Bob Butler to bring all of that up to date. We talked about, I'm now on page five already, and just under attendance, it, the change there would reflect the fact that staff are now paperless in reporting their absences between the use of Aesop and also the Employee Access Portal in Skyward. So that language needed to be changed. There, Bob Butler recommended a change in, in our background checks, charges, and convictions of any active employees. You can see that there. He also said that we should add some language in our employee handbook that says that if an employee is driving one of our vehicles, that there are consequences for any traffic violations during that, gives us more latitude in what those, that that discipline could reflect the severity of any violation. Obviously, that's not an issue here, but we needed to do that. By statute, we needed to change some things about workplace safety and who is eligible to bring a firearm onto the premises. That would be law enforcement agents can do that. On page six, we needed to clarify that it is certified teaching staff that has the choice of the 22 or the 26 pay periods. That wording wasn't correct last year, so we need to fix that. We have always offered eight, excuse me, let me start at the beginning. Beginning last year, any new employee that wanted to start a TSA, a Tax Shelter Annuity, in the past, they had a choice of eight different vendors. We limited that now to just the WEA member benefits. We did that last year, but we didn't put it in the handbook. In the past, we had had eight vendors, but there was language that said that if any of those did not have any participants, that that would be dropped, and that did happen this year. So now we have seven vendors grandfathered in rather than the eight. This year, I've shared with you that we have added some services under workman's compensation, and if a staff member would be injured, we now have services set up directly with Occupational Health at both Fort Atkinson Hospital and Watertown Hospital. And so all of the reporting information and the resources are there for staff to use that service. We have changed the amount that staff members can contribute to their flexible spending account. That number is dictated by IRS code, and so we just took out the specific number there and changed it to the maximum IRS. We offer something called cash-in-lou, it's actually called alternate benefit plan. We had been, we talked to people about a lump sum of $5,700, and while that's true, so if you don't take our health insurance, you know, you can have a lump sum of money, that actually isn't correct. It should really relate to a month-by-month payout at $4.75 per month, so we wanted to clean up that language. Then I'm at the, going to be starting the top of page eight. Bob Butler has recommended that we include more information in the month, or the yearly letters of assignment teacher contracts that we offer to teachers. There's no new information there, but in the past, it had referred to the handbook. He recommends that we put some information there, so I've included that contract language as in its entirety there for you to look at. On page 13, another recommendation by Bob Butler is some clarifying language about limitations on docking pay for exempt employees. You can read through that, and like I said, I've shared this with the group, so they can take a look at as well. Even though we haven't had any job shares in several years, there's some new language that was recommended that we put in, that would be on pages 14 and 15. It's kind of some old language that we needed to clean up. I mentioned this during Finance Committee. On the bottom of page 15, our employee handbook had been very specific about the percentages that the district paid and the, and the employee paid for premium contributions for health insurance. We just wanted to make that a little bit more generic, so we don't have to change it every year or add any confusion, so we're going to just change it to say the district and the employee shall share in the single or family coverage premiums as set forth and communicated by the district annually. Now the next one on page 16 is about health reimbursement accounts, and this is repeated several times in this document. This language has been proposed by the Horton Group, and we reviewed it with Bob Butler, who said we should review it with key benefits to look to see if there's any implications for this explanation of health, health reimbursement account or HRA language. And we did that this afternoon, and she actually said we should go right to the vendor of, the vendor contract with HRA. So that information is still tentative. But basically, what it's about is if an employee starts a contract in July and then resigns in August, do they get that whole HRA for the whole entire year? Or should it be prorated? Another portion is, let's just use Wendy Brockert as an example. Wendy started in March. Does she get that whole HRA based on how much her, the, the health insurance option that she chose? Or should that be prorated because there's only three months of it? So that is what this language is about. And so we're going to double-check that with our provider and our, our contract with our HRA account. But I wanted to put it in here, so it is technically the first reading, and we can move ahead in September when we get more information. Now, some of this becomes redundant because I have included every reference when it happens in each section of the handbook. So I would ask that you turn to page 20. This reflects Part 5 of the handbook, or the co-curricular professional, non-professional staff. And this has to do with co-curricular pay. And there were some roles that we have been paying out that aren't in the handbook at this time, so I've just listed those there as the language that we'd like to put in. But we have paid all of these, there's no new, there's nothing new here. You've heard about all of those, but I just want to get it in the handbook so we're clear about all the different co-curricular contracts that we've been offering and what the pay is. We are required by law to do a poster and information for staff about the Wisconsin Bone, Marrow and Organ Donation Leave Act. So that's being added to the book. And then finally, there are some changes and improvements, I think, to the appendices. So Appendix 2 will now include all of those contacts that I told you about. If an employee should be hurt at work, who they contact, when they contact, the procedure, adding that Bone, Bone, Marrow and Organ Donor Leave Act poster. We need to update the payroll schedule, that's the exact dates when staff would be paid, that's one of the appendices. And then the handbook had still included the old pay scale that talked about professional development. That's all been replaced by our new compensation program, so that was removed. So I, I really don't believe that there are any substantive changes to anything, it's just language and cleanup that reflects our practices right now. We will give you more information about that language around the HRA as that becomes available. Any questions? It's a lot to digest, so don't hesitate to.
That's it.
So don't hesitate to call me or, or ask as you kind of process through that.
All right, thank you. All right, action items. I think we can take A, B, C, and D together. Someone want to make a motion?
I'll try it.
All right.
Okay.
Go for it.
Okay, I move the board approve the minutes of the July 10th Regular Board of Education Meeting and the July 10th, 2017 Finance Committee, Committee for Proceedings. As well as the July 20th Facility Committee Meetings.
And?
Proceedings. Oh, one more?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I also include in that motion, the board approve the proceedings of the August 10th, 2017 Policy Committee Meeting.
Second. All right, good. Move and second any questions, comments?
Yeah, that was awful.
All the minutes.
Good job.
All right, roll call, please.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert Timperio.
Aye.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Approval of Elementary School Student Handbook for the 2017-18 school year. Are you getting another one in there? Oh, approval voucher, yeah, that's important too, right? Approval of the vouchers and invoices.
I move the board approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $1,811,304.04 for the month of July 2017.
Second.
Move and second to approve the vouchers and invoices, questions, comments on that? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert Timperio.
Aye.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. All right, now, approval of Elementary School Handbook.
This was presented to you in July, and Ms. Thompson is here to answer any questions.
I move the board approve the Elementary School Student Handbook for the 2017-18 school year.
Second.
Questions, comments on that? Roll call, please.
Robert Timperio.
Aye.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of Middle School Student Handbook.
Again, this was presented to you in July, and Ms. Bauer is here for any questions.
I'll move the board approve the Middle School Student Handbook for the 2017-18 school year.
Second.
Move and second to approve the Middle School Handbook. Questions on that, comments? Roll call, please.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert Timperio.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of professional staff resignation.
We did have one professional staff resignation, and I'll read that, it's from Ms. Melissa Wiswell. It was with a very heavy heart that I turned in my resignation effective immediately. I accepted a position at home in McFarland, where I'll be just three short minutes away from my daughter, and she just had that baby this spring. I've had such a fulfilling two years at Lake Mills and will always hold a very special place in my heart. Thank you for always being supportive and positive. I was lucky to be part of such an amazing district where I learned so much and met so many great people. I will definitely miss Lake Mills. And because she did resign after the 1st of August, she has and will pay the liquidated damages.
Well, I'll move the board approve the resignation of Ms. Melissa Wiswell. Thank her for her service to the students, families, and community of the Lake Mills Area School District.
Second.
Moved and seconded, questions, comments on that? All right, roll call, please.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert Timperio.
Aye.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of support staff resignations.
We have three of those, I've included their letters there, they're rather lengthy that you can take a look at, and one of those just came in this morning, so.
All right, motion.
I move the board approve the support staff resignations of Mr. Sam Fazel as special education para-educator, Ms. Beth Urb as special education para-educator, and Mr. Stephen Bush as crossing guard for the 2017-18 school year. We thank each of them for their time with the Lake Mills Area School District and wish them the best in their future endeavors.
Second.
Move and seconded to approve the support staff resignations. Questions on that, comments? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert Timperio.
Aye.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of co-curricular resignation.
We have two coaching resignations this month.
I move the board approve the co-curricular resignation of Mr. Nate Olson as assistant varsity football coach and Ms. Vanessa Toll as a seventh-grade volleyball coach. Thank them for their dedication to the students of the Lake Mills Area School District.
Second.
Move and seconded approval of co-curricular resignations. Any questions on that? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Robert Timperio.
Aye.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of professional staff contracts.
Well, this is a better part of the meeting. We have been able to secure three people who are actually in the, the area of special education. All of them are fully licensed. I can tell you that districts around us are not able to say that, so we have two special education teachers and a school psychologist on your list tonight.
Excellent, motion, please.
I move the board approve the following professional staff contracts and welcome them to the Lake Mills Area School District. Ms. Brittany Duchner, middle school special education teacher, Ms. Natalie Benikas, elementary school psychologist, and Kenzie Uphoff, elementary school special education teacher.
Second.
Move and seconded to approve the professional staff contracts, the new people and staff. Questions on that? Roll call, please.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert Timperio.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of support staff letters of assignment.
So there are several. Within this list are people who have been, have been substitutes for us, so we know them well. And there are also two people who have accepted different roles, so the letter of assignment is different than that offered in May.
I move the board approve the following support staff letters of assignments to Ms. Samantha Flint as 4K para-educator at the elementary school, Ms. Rebecca Cole as regular para-educator at the elementary school, Ms. Dawn Patrick as special education para-educator at the elementary school, Ms. Sarah Hayes as special education para-educator at the elementary school, Ms. Kathy Bruning as special education para-educator for the 18- to 21-year-old transition program, Ms. Courtney Allen as crossing guard, Ms. Tracy Hamilton as food service worker, Ms. Susan Knappel as bus driver, and Mr. Boyack as bus driver. service worker, Ms. Susan Knappel as bus driver, and Mr. Boyack as bus driver.
Second.
Good, second. Moved and seconded to approve all those people, thank you. Questions? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Timperio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of co-curricular letters of assignment.
As you can imagine, we also had some coaching vacancies to fill, even as we begin the seasons these last couple weeks, and they are listed there.
I move the board approve, are we ready for this? The following co-curricular letters of assignment, Mr. Sean Balig as middle school cross-country coach, Ms. Sierra Curran as JV girls' basketball coach, Mr. Carl Gates as freshman girls' basketball coach, Mr. Steve Murphy as assistant football coach, and Mr. David Alzberger as assistant football coach.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve co-curricular letters of assignment. Questions? Roll call on that, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Timperio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of gifts?
We've had several very, very generous gifts, as you can see by this list.
I move the board accept the following donations and thank the donors for their generous support of our students. A clarinet to the Lake Mills Middle School with a value of $2,000 donated in the memory of Mr. Mike Larson. A soccer cover for the Lake Mills High School, a soccer bench cover, excuse me, to the Lake Mills High School with a value of $3,300 donated by Dr. Crowell and Dr. Crowell of Lake Mills Chiropractic. A $100 donation for the Cultural Differences Program at the elementary school from the Tyranina Ladies Service Club. A $150 donation to the Farm-to-School Program at the elementary school from the Tyranina Ladies Service Club. School supplies with an estimated value of $7,000 from the Bank of Lake Mills.
Correction.
Seven hundred?
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred dollar donation from the Bank of Lake Mills.
What did I say?
Seven thousand? We'll take it, I mean, if they want to, you know.
Thank you for the correction.
Second.
Second, all right, questions? Thank everybody for their generous gifts. Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Timperio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. September Board of General Items.
We will be bringing a proposed contract with Head Start, a rental, potential rental agreement with Head Start to you. We'll do the second reading of handbook updates, and we'll have all that information. We, I really want to get that approved in September, so that we can actually print out handbooks, and I'll meet with all staff members to go through that this year. Bring forward a potential joint project with the Athletic Boosters to look at finishing off the payments on the concession stand at the high school. And there will be many, many more gifts, because we had several groups donate school supplies for the opening of school. And we'll have those listed next month.
Will we be ready with policy yet, or not? Maybe? Maybe? Maybe?
Probably have a first reading of many policies.
Chunks.
Chunks.
Are there, are there, are there any updates on the, the?
Enrolment?
No, the backpack program or anything like that?
Oh.
Any updates for next meeting or anything?
With, there has been a lot happening in those two programs, so yeah, I'll have each school do an update on that next month.
Anything else? Yes?
Can I just make a comment, going on what Pam had said, and that is Dawn and I attended the summit last week, and it was simply outstanding, there were excellent breakout sessions. And we have a group that's very heavily invested in public education that functions right in our community, and we should be, you know, really pleased with what they do to support public education, and it was a great summit.
It really was.
Anything else? Good, good, I've heard nothing but good things, too. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
No, I did. I need a second.
Need a second.
All right. We have roll call on that, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Timperio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, passes unanimously. We are adjourned, thank you all.